Been there and here now? Do you have any other questions that I probably should have addressed at the beginning? You can do that. Any other things, Chris?
That's it.
All right. Thank you for your information and your thoughts. And it'll be forwarded to the appropriate people to, and stick around. We'll, we'll have a discussion here in a little bit. Not a discussion back in the morning. We will have a discussion. On that. Item number nine, reports from superintendent staff and board. Written reports were provided to the board members and are linked to this meeting's agenda. Item number 10, consent agenda.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve items 10A through 10I on the consent agenda as presented.
Can I get a motion?
I need motion, maximum.
Second. Roll call, Ms. McWilliams.
Aye.
Ms. Maxwell.
Aye.
Mr. Corley, aye. Mr. Mayes, aye. Item number 12, Board of Education, consideration to approve SJCHS students to the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair in Columbus, Ohio, in May of 2025. Presented by Giza. That guy. Did I totally butcher it?
Yes.
Deka.
Daisy Deka.
Daisy Deka. I need three questions.
My name is Daisy Deka and I am a teacher at Salmon College High School. And we're here today with my students, Jaden Nerciso and June Makinas, to ask permission for these two wonderful future scientists to travel to Columbus, Ohio on May 10th to 16th for the International Science and Engineering Fair. So they're gonna give you a brief, like really quick summary of their, their projects, their science research that they will compete with at the International Science Fair.
I'm June Makinas. I've been working towards ISA for about, since I was like third grade. It's something I've really decided for. This year is a buildup of last year where I looked at the behavioral impacts of microgravity and hypergravity on the softy love at a model for the needs of freak dance. This year I looked at the genomic effects while comparing those to massive data sets. And I am now looking at how to apply that to health sciences and more specifically cancers as a best. Or I have proved that it goes down the cell growth and metastasis.
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Jaden Nerciso. I am fourth junior at Salmon College High School. And what my project was about was that I was investigating whether music had an effect on students in the classroom. So what I was looking at was whether playing background music while students were completing tasks. So specifically like lab activities, playing background music and seeing whether that actually had an effect on their productivity. So what I was measuring was whether they could complete the task in a more efficient manner. So they dropped the responses like a box used called papers. The data was subjective, but we did ultimately find out that playing music that's more stimulating. So I guess genres of music like rock music, genres of music like pop music. It's, we ultimately found out that it's more beneficial to those students. So, yeah, that's what we were, ultimately found out. This is my first time doing science persons before three. So I'm really, really a pleasure that I get to have the opportunity to go to ISA. And it's really something that I take a lot of interest in now. So thank you.
Good job, you guys.
Wait, wait, wait. Step back then. All right. So I should listen to more rock music?
It depends on what you're working on.
And young lady, I'm sorry, but explain to me, you said you, or you said at the end, and I know you're super nervous and you don't really wanna talk, but you're good. We're just people, so have fun. You said that you ruled that you could slow down.
Yeah. So I did a simulated microgravity experiment. I reprinted and camcoded a random position key. And then I simulated a sign wave to change the direction and speed of the fly's orientation. Therefore, simulated microgravity. I looked at the fly's development over the past couple of weeks. Currently, they're going through, or they will be going through natural sequencing to compare those to massive data sets. But I showed that, well, I have proved through my experimentation that they aged a lot slower and a lot of repigmentation, which does prove that's all the change.
Can you slow down aging? That's awesome. Thanks. Any other questions?
Good job.
Yeah, great. That's awesome stuff. And it's cool.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the International Science and Engineering Fair in Columbus, Ohio for Salmon High School as presented.
So, Ms. McWilliams.
Second question.
Roll call, Ms. McWilliams.
Aye.
Ms. Swell.
Aye.
Mr. Corley, aye. Mr. Mayes, aye.
Good work. Same travels.
Consideration to approve FHS Key Club to Orlando, Florida on July 1st through the 7th for the 100th birthday of Key Club, presented by Amber.
Hello, my name is Gladys Stan. I'm currently in Farmington High School Key Club president. And here with me, I'm Kaitlin Johnson. I am the Farmington High School Key Club Vice President. And today we want to get your approval for our club to go to the international conference at Orlando, Florida from June 30th to July 7th to celebrate the 100th year of Key Club. Anything, things that we'll be doing over there is hosting a workshop for other people. And this is like, the international conference is like people from all over the world coming together. So we're really excited to show a workshop of like how to build your own key club and have like better other students' leadership abilities and marketing of how to just put their name up. I will also be helping her with the workshop. But I have also took on the task, task to get all our future positions, like officer positions into the global leadership workshop. It's basically focusing on like different types of ways to become a better leader. Also, I will be helping them apply for the masterclass. You can only take it there. And it also goes more into depth how to be a better leader, so.
How many of you are going?
We have 17 of us students, one faculty advisor, and two parents who are going to be shadow learning.
Are you going to Disney World?
Yes.
You're better. Absolutely.
Any other question?
Enough. All right. What's, what's the Key Club?
Key Club is a nonprofit organization led by students. We usually hold every meeting that we have by ourselves. And we list every other. Sorry.
It's all right.
I, well, actually, we actually do like service projects throughout the community. So we volunteer a lot for different events and organizations. Farmington High School Key Club completed 1,452 service hours this past year and won first place in our achievement awards. What's your definition of leadership? My definition of leadership is accepting that you're not gonna be perfect and you're gonna be making mistakes throughout the whole way. And I'm sorry. My definition would probably be someone like who's humble and ready to guide others who need that guidance for like moving onwards. I feel like it's definitely important for you to have patience in order to be a leader. And just to kind of like look out for everyone that you're watching over. And maybe to like be open-minded, to listen to others' opinions and to just know that you're not gonna be right all the time. And like, you can't just dictate everything. So. Perfect.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the FHS Key Club to Orlando on July 1st through the 7th for the 100th birthday of Key Club as presented.
Can I get a motion? Second. Second. Roll call, Ms. McWilliams.
Aye.
Ms. Maxwell.
Aye.
Mr. Corley, aye. Mr. Mayes, aye. Consideration to approve RFP 2025 dash, oh, thank you ladies. It's the funding of painting services.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening, President. I'm Corley, members of the board. I have the RFP for the Ms. Mayes painting services. We have two respondents, respondents to the RFP. One of those, their response came in late and incomplete. So we really have just funded, bid a response. It's for Hastings sandblasting painting and coating services. Our very next question.
I'm gonna give a quick description of what we're doing.
It's kind of bulky, but it's in there. So typically, we, we hire painting service every year and they alternate school based off need. Interior, exterior, and they just paint every school that's on the rotation of the year. So because of the size of the contract, we do either have to use another district contract, which that one ran out this last year, so we had to go into RFP and create our own contract. So Hastings has been the vendor that has been doing our schools for I don't know how many years. And the only other one, like Bobby said, was late and incomplete, so we considered.
What is the process for going out to RFP?
A lot. We create a, a contract, a, a scope of work of what we're looking for. And then we detail pretty much, here's our expectations of working for a school district and obtaining a government contract. We put it in a paper, we publicize it out everywhere. Bobby could probably speak more on that. And then we set a hard deadline of when we accept those, those offers and bids to come in. And they have to provide us with past projects, their bonding and insurance, all those things. And then we sit down and look at all the, the bids that come in. And there's a committee this year, this one was all plan ops. And we grade each vendor on the criteria scale and bias what we're gonna do.
How long is the contact for?
So I'm not sure, this one is.
They're, they're usually three years than the usual RFP. I'm not sure on this one.
But can always be terminated by either party within 30 days.
With 30 days, though.
With 30 days.
Most of paintings done over the summer in the building, which I get. So what paintings are on the? Thoughts? Well, slowly, I was trying to go through, but it's, it's a rotation. Some schools like Adamas who host summer stuff usually is an annual one. Other ones, it's every other year. And sometimes only certain sections of the school. And then our plan ops crew walk the facilities towards the end of the year and determine who gets volunteer help.
There's a certain color?
Yeah, so the district does have a color coding that we stay within. Anything outside that color coding is not, that just goes, it's hard to find those and match and do all those things. So most of them are pretty, pretty fine. Yeah.
Probably 10 years ago, we went to a color palette, right? Because people would choose all the wall colors. And then when it came time to touch up, going to buy a gallon of paint, you know, it wasn't as fast effective. So there's probably an eighth of 10 colors.
Now the colors watching them all.
Fantastic.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the R F P twenty twenty-five dash two for the painting services as presented.
Can I get a motion?
I want a motion, Ms. McWilliams.
Second. Second, please. Hello, Ms. McWilliams.
Aye.
Ms. Maxwell.
Aye.
Mr. Corley, aye. Mr. Mays, aye. Letter D, reading and editing step changes to policy J dash three one five zero, student possession and use of personal electronic devices presented by superintendent.
So I think it was January where we had our first initial reading step for this policy. What we've done since is obviously watch legislation to see what would be required in a policy. So anybody that's following Senate Bill eleven, so, um, some of the, some of the comments that Mr. Silver made, I agree with wholeheartedly. Uh, but in Senate Bill eleven, and I think we've touched on these, and I've I don't have the comments, I just get out the principles and so they've made comments on it that I can share with you later, but I do want, want you to know that if you haven't read Senate Bill eleven, that it's some things that are in there in this policy, including a policy that prohibits a student from using a wireless communication device during instructional hours, authorizes teachers to permit a student to use wireless communication for educational purposes during instructional hours. But to your point, Mr. Silver, um, there is something in Senate Bill eleven that says that the policy has to be written where it permits a student to use a wireless communication device in the event of an emergency or to manage the student's healthcare. I agree to one hundred percent. You know, when we have emergencies and there's fifteen hundred students on a cell phone, all it does is clog up the, the lines of communication and create more issues, and we've seen that across the country. Um, but we also have to follow the Senate bill or the law that if they do pass, or she does sign, and I haven't, I don't have an update whether she has or she has not. Um, so I don't know the status of that, so.
Sure. I, I know it's not a discussion. I don't wanna turn into that either. Do we know whether it has to be just the ability to contact them, or does it have to be through their own personal device to contact them?
Yeah, so it's a good question. I mean, I imagine you can probably, uh, it says permit a student to use a wireless communication device in the event of an emergency or to manage a student's healthcare.
Okay.
And that was part of Senate Bill eleven that we have to consider that in our policy.
As long as she signs it.
As long as she signs it.
If she doesn't sign it, we can still make this our policy.
Correct.
So what would that look like? Would that be, okay, um, they have to keep their cell phones in their backpacks? And then if there's an emergency, the teacher can allow them to go get their cell phones?
So part of the policy, it, it'll come down to, once, once a policy is written as general as it is or as detailed as it is, the school will then determine what that looks like. So is there a place at the front of your classroom, you know, where you have thirty calculators, you know, you've seen those holders where the students, we might show up to class and we're gonna replace the, the calculator with a phone. So those are options, or yes, it's put away. Mason View Middle School, Mason Be here. Uh, Mason View Middle School has their students put their phones in that office. It's gonna be, um, Mr. Parent Tony, interview for Director of Support Services today, somebody who's gonna manage our handbooks and some of these policies. There'll be bringing people together to determine at each level, 'cause I'm sure it's different, whether it's elementary school, middle school, high school, what that might look like.
But Mason View is already.
Yes. I'd love to have him come at some point, maybe it'll be at the next work, work session where we can talk about, um, what it's done for Mason View Middle School, some of the things that Mr. Silver has talked about, Mason View's reaping the benefits of, right? Uh, more and more, uh, student engagement, less discipline, a lot of positives. The day in front of me, but.
I mean, I definitely see it. It's a, you know, we're worried about chronic absenteeism, but in a lot of ways, we have chronic absenteeism in our classrooms. They're putting earbuds, you know, headphones in, they can't even hear the teachers. Um, they're being distracted every second with messages, and I think it's a big problem, and if we wanna tackle, um, the next step in education for our students, we need to found a serious policy around it.
I would agree. Um, what I would like to do after tonight is share the same document that I've shared with you before, has some of the teacher comments in there and have it be comment only. You can come out, out to the side. Uh, but I think that you have to, when you're doing so, pull up Senate Bill eleven, because a lot of things that we wanna do, we can't do.
So you'll say that?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and I just wanted to throw it back on the agenda. I know, I think it's important that we have a policy approved and adopted no later than, and I'll keep it on because there can be an approval step in May or June, but no later than June sixth, we can start communicating for first day of school.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what I'll do is I'll share it, um, and I'll share, um, I'll share it with you. So we can comment away. Um, so I'll share it, and we've shared, I've shared it across many places. And you can comment on it, and we'll be on the agenda for many, and if we're to the point where we feel like we can approve it, we will.
Awesome. All right. Item number thirteen, advanced planning, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, a holiday, all offices closed, May thirteenth, work session and board meeting. Motion to play board.
Ms. Williams.
Second, aye. Hello, Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Maxwell.
Aye.
Mr. Corley, uh, Mr. Mays, aye. Meeting adjourned at six oh six thirty-five.